Yeah, I've been standing up there talking. Good morning. We're here for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, June 2nd, 9:00 a.m. We're here in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street. And as always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What a way to start the morning. Good morning, by the way. It's good to see you back, hopefully some rested time. You'd well deserved.
I think you had like two days of vacation. I mean, we're all acting like you were gone.
Not really, because I feel like people called you yesterday immediately.
Commissioner Willis and I were sharing that yesterday about how we were sitting after a meeting and we were just saying how, wow, it felt so different to just be able to relax a little bit. We have been going and going and going and, you know, we got done with budgets, by the way. Great job on budgets. And yesterday, it just, it kind of felt like we were getting back to a little bit of normalcy, maybe. Katrina?
Oh, look at her. There's no crying.
We have nobody signed up for public comment. Oh, yes, we do. David's here today. Welcome, David. Good to see you. So we'll go to that and then we'll hear about normalcy from Katrina. Just introduce yourself for the record, as you know.
My name's David Beam. I'm a spokesman for disability people in Marion County. I'd like to see the Fair Board, for Marion County Fair start opening up after this virus get over with. And I'd like to see this done for families and disability people and everybody for Marion County would come and have a good time. And music, too. So I'd like to see commissioners will look at that for soon as possible and get it going. And the board members really want it started, so I urge everybody come and attend the county commissioners' meeting and get this done for Marion County for the families.
Get the fair going? Is that what you said?
Yes, I'd like to see that done. And I'd like to still be on the Fair Board, too, for the county, because a lot of disability people attend more meetings and be more involved.
Well, your leadership is appreciated in that area. And I know we're going to have a fair.
Yeah, but I'd like to see the board members will urge everybody to attend and businesses, too.
As in us board members or the board members from the Fair?
The Fair Board and the county commissioners.
All right. Well, everybody who's watching today, we're going to urge them to attend the fair. And I know Tamara, she's not down here this morning, but I know Tamara's team's working really hard.
And she wants, she told me she wants me still be advisor to work on that fair stuff. So I'm doing my best.
Great.
Get the county back where it was. And everybody who should wear, don't have the shot, they should have wear a mask. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stay cool out there.
I will. Thank you.
I have not been. I've been moving the last 12 hours. It's been really hot. All right, so now we get to hear, back to normalcy, update, Katrina. I know we said we're going every other week and this has been like three weeks in a row. And I think this is the start of the every other week. So what we did talk about was having Scott give us a wildfire recovery update every other week. So we'll alternate back and forth between the Health Department and COVID and then wildfire recovery. I don't think we need to sneak ice storms in there.
No.
Right? Not at 90-degree days. So, welcome.
Thank you. Katrina Rothenberger, Public Health Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services. And yes, I won't be here next week. And it does kick off the every other week cadence, which I think is great. And we're kind of into that return to normal that David mentioned, so it's very encouraging. Today, there were 41 new cases. And we've been tracking our seven-day average daily case number. And we are at 38. So we're looking at that every seven day, every day on a seven-day rolling average. And we have seen a 16% decrease from the two-week period, May 16th through May 29th, from the previous two-week period, May 9th through the 22nd. So we've only had 617 cases in that two-week period, which is 176.7 per 100,000. It's super encouraging to see these numbers continue to decline. Our positivity rate for that two-week period, the 16th through the 29th, was 7.2%. And we're still in the high-risk category. The state hospital metrics don't necessarily apply to us right now when we're in, because we crossed the threshold below the 200. So, but the hospital metrics have not been met for this period as of yesterday.
They have not?
They have not been met.
Still above 300?
So when they're, it's kind of backwards. So when they say they've been met, it means that they're over the 300 threshold and greater than the 16 or 15%. So we're below 300 hospitals cases and below the 15%.
Okay, so we're meeting the criteria to open, but, okay, it's reverse of what I think.
It's a little backwards. Yeah.
I think we should clarify this, though, because people do get confused. And sometimes the language that OHA uses isn't entirely accurate, right? Because they use one metric to push you up a level and they use a different metric to move you down a level, right?
Well, there are two different ways we can move down.
Well, I'm just, anyway.
I just wrote, I just wrote down, you know, I have this face mask that says, "In child abuse." I said, "We should have a face mask that say, 'In COVID abuse.'"
If we, so we can move down a lower risk level prior to reaching the 65% vaccination benchmark if we're below 348 cases in a two-week period. So there are two pathways to move down to the lower risk, or three, if you want to consider the state reaching 70% of vaccination. So either way, it seems like we will get there either by the end of June, early July. In Marion County, we have vaccinated almost 58% of all of our residents, which is 157,674 people with at least one dose. This does include the federal data, so the numbers I shared today don't match what's on the OHA website. We get a separate spreadsheet emailed to us directly from Oregon Health Authority, but for some reason, it's not posted online. And we do have about 19,685 more people to reach the 65% benchmark. We did see one of the highest growth rates in the state for our county in new people being vaccinated from the previous seven days. So we had a 2% growth rate for folks over the age of 16. And then the age range 40 to 64 actually had one of the higher growth rates in people getting vaccinated in the previous seven days, at about 1.9%. So we need to immunize roughly 700 people per day to reach the 65% goal by June 30th. And that previous seven days, it was, if my math is correct, it was between like 750, 780 people that were immunized per day.
So if we keep that up, we'll make it.
Yes. Yes. So, and then if we do reach the statewide goal of 70% of the population, then Governor Brown has said she will lift most of the restrictions that are currently in place. And that we're currently at 65.8% of the state that has received at least one dose, which is 2.2 million Oregonians that have received one dose and about 1.8 million are fully vaccinated. We are seeing the groups of people who have lower immunization rates are tending to be the groups of people who have higher case, COVID case rates. So what that tells me is that our vaccinations are working and are still the best way to protect ourselves from COVID-19. We do expect that Moderna will soon apply for emergency use authorization to immunize folks over the age of 12. And since I did mention that I'll be coming here only every other week now, we are keeping our website up to date with data. So our website is covid-19.mchealthy.net. There is a page for data and reports. And we provide a weekly report about vaccinations and then a biweekly report for, that's more in-depth, on COVID-19 data and trends. So our vaccination report should hopefully be done today. The data came in late because of the holiday weekend. So check our website for updated data. We have, the vaccination report is only about five pages and it's really in-depth. We have vaccinations by age, race, ethnicity, and zip code. So it's really interesting. And then lastly, the United States just recorded a seven-day average of fewer than 20,000 new daily COVID-19 cases for the first time since March of 2020, so since the beginning of the pandemic. And just a great milestone to celebrate us getting back to normal and getting all these vaccines out to their community is really making an impact. So, thank you.
Did you mention we submitted our plan?
Oh, yes. We did submit our equity plan last week on Thursday. We're also going to post it on our website. And then we're planning to provide, part of our equity plan is to provide updates back to the community on how we're making an impact in those immunization rates. And we're doing that through that vaccination report that is posted to our website. So once that's posted, we'll email it out to our partners and let them know and show the progress that we've made in various demographic groups.
So can the public find that equity plan on OHA's website?
Once it is accepted by Oregon Health Authority, they will post it. They will be reviewing it this weekend, so we anticipate some feedback next week. Yeah.
Are you going to post it before or after the approval on your, on your website?
Probably not. I think it's already posted. They haven't necessarily approved it yet, but you all have. And we have, we feel like it's
What else matters?
Very complete. So if they have feedback, we can make those edits and repost it. But we just wanted to share with our partners because they helped us develop it in the first place, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of good input to that.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Yeah, we took a little extra time because we kind of wanted to get that in two weeks ago and took a little extra time, had partners review it, and they had some good input.
Yeah.
I know that statement Marin made was a really good addition to it, too. So. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We won't get to see you next week. We will miss you, but you probably won't miss us. Yeah. Thanks, Katrina. All right, we'll move on to consent calendar. Mr. Willis?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda. In it, under Finance, approve a quitclaim deed for the sale of property tax ID number R54965 from Marion County to the grantee. Under Health and Human Services, approve amendment number five to the contract for services with Rain Tree Systems Incorporated to add $70,000 for a new not-to-exceed contract total of $1,414,064.30 for electronic healthcare information systems, software licensing, and support for behavioral and public health services. Under Information Technology, approve the purchase order contract with Acro Services Corporation to add $70,000 for a new contract total of $165,920 for contracted services for temporary support staff through June 30th, 2021. Under Treasurer's Office, approve an order distributing Oregon State Forestry timber revenue in the amount of $2,865,343.25, as per ORS Chapter 530.
I second the motion.
I second the motion. Only comment I'd make is under the Treasurer's Office, it should be like $2 billion or something like that, based on the lawsuit.
No.
Yeah.
I think that's just interest, right?
Yeah, no, it's $220,000 a day in interest.
I know.
Right, yeah, that's right. Sorry.
That's okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. First action item, under Board of Commissioners, consider approving the incoming funds wildfire relief grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Administrative Services, amount of $426,957 for costs associated with Marion County Sheriff's Office patrol services, public works, parks, expenses through June 30th, 2021. Scott, welcome.
Yep, thank you. Well, that was such a good staff report you gave right there. I'll just kind of tack on just, I think the key thing is
Can you introduce yourself?
Introduce yourself.
Scott McClair, Long-Term Disaster Recovery Manager. And I think this is a, this is a broader, the entire effort that the county's been doing to support what's going on in the wildfire recovery efforts, very aggressive. I think it's a really good example of how the state's been backing us and how the feds have been backing us. It's been a really good team effort on this, and this is a good example. The specific numbers, we actually had $224,645 for sheriff's patrol. That's for enhanced services just in the interim period, so they can keep track of what's going on up there, provide some stability to the residents. And then $202,312 park expenses, that's some cleanup efforts and also the, looking at the parks, doing all the master plans that you saw previously and doing that effort. So they've got a variety of areas that they've been using that money in, but very well used in. It's very valuable to have those funds. And we'd approve approval of the grant agreement.
So Jan, this, this is the money that came in the rebalance bill, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So this was, this was one of the first bills they passed to help us out. And we're just now receiving that through DAS. Okay, questions for Scott?
No.
All right.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the incoming funds wildfire relief grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Administrative Services in the amount of $426,957 for costs associated with the Marion County Sheriff's Office patrol services and public works, parks, expenses through June 30th, 2021.
I second the motion.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thanks, Scott. And we'll see you next Wednesday for your update report. Thank you. Okay, also, this next item is under Board of Commissioners. Consider approval incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Administrative Services in the amount of $1,856,695.31 for CAREZAC COVID-19 vaccination efforts retroactive to March 1st, 2020 through December 31st of 2021. Ryan, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan Matthews, Administrator for Marion County Health and Human Services. I am here seeking approval of a new IGA with the state of Oregon. This is with the Department of Administrative Services. Traditionally, I'm here presenting funding coming through the Oregon Health Authority for the COVID-19 response. But this is money that, this is $1,856,695 that was allocated to Marion County specifically to encourage and support the COVID-19 vaccination process. One of the deliverables, which is already discussed in Katrina's presentation, was the equity plan. So we have submitted the equity plan, which is one of the requirements related to this contract. We're anticipating approval next week. That really outlined what we've been doing throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, which is collaborating with our community partners, working to make sure that we can break down barriers for people to access the needed services and supports during this pandemic. This, while we don't have a formal budget associated with this 1.8 million yet, the intent of these funds are for marketing, promotional activities, and education and outreach to encourage our community to get vaccinated. We ideally will be looking to contract a portion of these funds out to community-based organizations and community partners. And we're really proud of those partnerships that we've built throughout this process. The intent is also to have culturally responsive, low-barrier access to COVID-19 vaccine. And really to, you know, as we talk about hitting and achieving that 65%, we want to make sure that we don't leave people behind and assume that that means the work is done. So that's really why these funds are here, to get us through the end of the calendar year. As people, once we hit 65%, we move to low risk and we open up the county, there's still maybe opportunities for people to want to seek out the vaccine that hadn't already. And there's still maybe people that are experiencing barriers or having challenges getting connected to a vaccine that they're interested in. So these funds are going to help us to be able to make sure we can navigate people to the resources that they need. It also has the potential to pay for some of our staff that are working in our vaccine operation unit as well. The benefit is that these funds actually run through December 31st, 2021, whereas a lot of the Oregon Health Authority funding that we've received expires on June 30th. So this helps elongate that, that funding resource. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about these funds?
I don't have any questions. Just want to make sure that if anybody is watching, that we're supposed to be, based on this contract, we get 50% within five days after the execution. We don't get the other, the other 50% is not guaranteed. And that is subject to the Oregon Health Authority and the Governor's Office to review our equity submission plan and determine whether we're making progress towards that. So
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, it's based on our performance, which we
A little subjective here.
Yes. But, but we expect that our performance will be high, as it has been throughout. So we feel confident in that.
Mr. Chair, I also, we talked about this in our meeting, and I just want to make the point again, there have been different strategies to promote vaccines in our community. And I think some of them are appropriate and some of them aren't. And so we directed our Health Department not to, not to use this money to induce people to get vaccines in ways that, that are coercive or are untoward or in a way that creates ethical quandaries. I mean, this really is a personal choice. Medical decisions are personal choices. And so my understanding and expectation is that we're not going to be paying people to get vaccines. That's not going to happen with this money. And I wouldn't support this if that was the case. So I just want to make sure that's on the record, that we won't be doing that. And I'd, I'd hope that you confirm that.
Yes, yeah, we'll write that language into our contract, that there will not be any. So when we think about promotional activities and marketing, like sometimes that can be, that can lead to incentives, which are like direct, either cash or gift cards or payments to individuals. That is not something that we would build into our agreement. So any, any pass-through funds to our community-based organizations or healthcare providers will explicitly note that the funds can't be used for that, but they can be used to hold events and hold things that can bring communities together. And then that can open up the pathways, if people choose to, to have access to the vaccine. So that's what, those are the kind of events that we want to support with these funds.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, I just echo what Commissioner Willis said. And also, I, I have concerns around events. And we talked about this. I think incentivizing anybody to get a shot is just morally wrong. I, I would really like to see these dollars used through the CBOs to provide direct access to people that otherwise haven't received the vaccine. The word "event" to me makes it seem like we're going to host a party and people are going to come get a vaccine. And I really want to shy away from that. If there's individuals in the community that lack transportation or whatnot, rather than, I know there are communities giving gas cards. I'd prefer we take our team to them. And I'd like the CBOs to take their teams to them, so that we were not transferring any type of dollar-valued item. I understand barriers and I understand capacity, but this is a lot of money. We could put up a pop-up tent with vaccines on just about every third block in Marion County, it feels like, just to get people to walk down the road to get the vaccine. And also, I'm really hopeful that in your promotional and marketing materials, you're going to really emphasize parental consent for students, anybody who's eligible to receive the vaccine, to have a parental consent form before they get that. And I'd like that to really be overlaid to the CBOs who are partnering with us, because I think it's not just important for parents to be involved in their kid's life. I also think it's a safety matter, because more often than not, kids don't know what they can and can't have when it comes to, well, drugs. And we don't want anything to happen in the middle of the night and the parent not know what the cause is. So parental consent is a big deal. But I, I do want to say, I'm really grateful for the work that your team has been doing. I received a notice that a lot of elementary schools in Salem-Kaiser were standing up vaccine clinics, which is really great. That means that that partnership is moving ahead. That provides access to a lot of those families that were really struggling before. Specifically, the nine that I saw are right in the heart of those zip codes that are really producing the virus. So, good job.
Thank you. Yeah, the team is doing a great job, for sure.
And Ryan, I mean, I think if, if, if OHA is, you know, pushing us to do something that goes against our core values, I think we have to say no, even if we leave money on the table. So
Agreed.
Yeah, and the contracts, we'll be able to direct with these funds what we want those funds to be used for in the scope of work of any contract that we enter into. So that shouldn't be a problem.
So I'm going to, I'm going to just say, when you use the word "event", let's say our Marion County Fair is coming up. That's an event. And to have that event and to promote a vaccine clinic at the fair would be an event that would be appropriate if we had, using these funds, why we're there to set up an area where, you know, CBOs could be involved to get their people there if there's a, you know, sometimes, I don't think we're having it this year, but sometimes a Sunday has special music for a certain population and having a vaccine clinic stood up using these types of things, that's what I would think is. When we're talking about events, that's where we could use these funds to help supplement some of those.
I agree. It's really partnering with events that are already happening where the community's coming together just to make sure it's the way to act.
I think that's pretty clear what we're talking about. All right, so if there's no further questions, Commissioner Willis?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Administrative Services in the amount of $1,856,695.31 for CARES Act COVID-19 vaccination efforts retroactive from March 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021, with the clarifications that we provided.
I second the motion.
Yeah, motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Sidney, you're up next. Under Health and Human Services, consider approval of contract for services with Bridgeway Recovery Services, Inc. in the amount of $1,228,438 to provide addiction treatment, recovery, prevention, problem gambling services to individuals served by the county retroactive to January 1st, 2021 through December of this year. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sidney Nestor, and I'm the Behavioral Health Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services. And here today, asking your consideration of a contract with Bridgway. And this is essentially pass-through money that we get from Oregon Health Authority that we pass through to Bridgway, and it helps fund indigent treatment services. That includes addiction treatment services on an outpatient basis, problem gambling inpatient and outpatient services, and detox services. So the money gets used specifically to support individuals who don't have Medicaid, Medicare, or other commercial insurance. Bridgway's been doing this work for many, many years.
Sidney, is this money, some of this money flow, is this money that comes from the alcohol tax, video lottery flows through OHA?
Yeah, that's a good question. I do not know where the root of the money on the OHA side comes from.
They're funded. Yeah.
I'm sure that parts of that are, I don't, marijuana tax.
So this, this contract, for example, would be if somebody was a video lottery machine and there's an 800 number there that says, "If you have a problem, call this number", they would be referred to that number and then locally, the Bridgway would be the local service provider for that.
Right, if they're, if they're indigent. And then there, they would do an assessment, so the contract requires that they're doing an ACM assessment, then to determine the appropriate level of care, whether that's outpatient services, which could include things like counseling groups, that type of service, or inpatient services.
Questions?
No.
Okay, ready?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the contract for services with Bridgway Recovery Services Incorporated in the amount of $1,228,438 to provide addiction treatment, recovery, prevention, and problem gambling services to individuals served, I lost my place, to individuals served by the county retroactive from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
I second the motion.
Yeah, motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, that's done. I'm going to recess the Board of Commissioners and open a contract review board. Item, action item is Health and Human Services. Consider approval of an order for a class special procurement exemption to provide residential care services to individuals that reside in adult foster homes, residential treatment homes, and residential treatment facilities retroactive to January 1st, 2021 through December of this year. And Camber is here. Where's Ryan again? So who's going to go first?
That was a great question.
Yeah, okay. Ryan Matthews, Administrator for Marion County Health and Human Services.
And I'm Camber Schlag, Contracts and Procurement Manager with Marion County. And we are here before you to discuss a class special procurement. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ryan and have him talk about the program.
Sure. So I can speak to this service. So the way our, so we recently approved our intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority that was on the board agenda a couple of weeks ago. And include And included in that is funding for those individuals that are in adult foster homes, in residential treatment homes, and residential treatment facilities that are basically pass-through funding. And so the reason we're here for a special procurement is because what happens is we have individuals that are living in these homes, receiving treatment, and rather than sort of thinking about putting that service out to bid, getting a different entity that maybe bids at a lower rate and then asking people to expect to uproot themselves in, in the home that they're living in and where they move to go to, you know, the lowest bidder sort of a process, isn't something that's really supportive and it isn't really in line with what the Medicaid rules are where people are, can direct their own care. They, they can choose where they want to live, where they want to receive services. And in terms of those locations, they're often driven by the expertise of the facility, the staffing that people require, whether or not it's, you know, one-to-one staffing, whether it's they can be in a home that's shared with, with maybe one or two staff that have three to four people that they're serving in the home. And the, and the rates that are, that are paid for the daily bed rates are determined by the state of Oregon based on, again, the facility, the staffing, the type of work that they do. So we are basically a pass-through conduit where we receive the money and, and within the contract, it's, it's funding for a bed rate at a facility for an individual person. And so then we need the mechanism to be able to, to pay those individuals and to pay those residential treatment facilities and adult foster homes. And so we're seeking approval for a special procurement so that we can just basically direct contract and pass those funds directly through rather than going through a procurement process which may end up in a situation where, where either people wouldn't be allowed to continue to, to live where they are currently receiving services or, you know, I, I don't know exactly how that would work, it would be a, a significant challenge for us through the traditional procurement process. So, so that's sort of the impetus for, for why we're here discussing the special procurement and I don't, and I think that one thing we've seen during the COVID-19 response, when we started talking about like how are we going to vaccinate all of our adult foster homes and residential facilities, we saw that that is a large list. There are many in our community, which is great, it's, it's a great resource to support people in need and it helps us to get people to step down and, and step out of sort of institutionalization like the Oregon State Hospital, getting into lower level of care, getting acclimated and, and integrated back into our community. So these are, these are certainly great resources for the people that, that need them and require that service and we're seeking approval to be able to move forward with a contract process that'll, that'll work for the system that's set up by the state. If that makes sense, so.
Sure.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just want to clarify, so the residents get to pick their own homes, is that right?
They, they do, we, we don't, we don't direct people where they should go. I mean, often it's driven by, you know, somebody's coming, they're assessed to have a certain level of need, there's probably limited options on where that could be, but, but people do have the right to, to choose, you know, where they live and where they get service.
Okay, I just want to make sure that if we're not doing the, the normal process, we're not picking houses for people, that the reason we're going around this normal process is because we want them to be able to choose their own housing.
Correct, and if people move, if people transfer, what happens is the funding will follow them, so we would get a contract amendment that would, you know, they would move from Carol's home to a different home and, and, and then we would make the contract change on our end as well. So people do have the ability to move, I don't know that that happens all that frequently because I think people get, you know, it's your home, you, you get, you, the people you're working with, the people that are supporting you, the people you're living with, you know, I think those are good support systems, so I don't know that it happens that frequently, but it can and, and that would be driven by their choice.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, you good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So Commissioner Willis?
My turn?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve an order for a class special procurement exemption to provide residential care services to individuals that reside in adult foster homes, residential treatment homes, and residential treatment facilities retroactive, retroactive from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
I second it.
Yeah, motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, I'm going to adjourn the contract review board and reconvene a Board of Commissioners meeting. That completes our work for the day and we read the calendar, I don't know whose turn it is.
You don't want me to do it? We've done it a while.
Yeah, okay. Is it a short one?
Hmm, medium.
Oh, okay, well then I don't want it.
Mr. Chair, this week, we have, our next meeting is at 10:30 this morning. It is a 2021-2022 Budget Committee meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building, it's 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. At noon today, June 2nd, we have a Woodburn Marion County meeting and that's a virtual meeting. And then at 4 o'clock this afternoon, we have a FEMA briefing for local officials located in the Commissioners' Boardroom, that's the fifth floor of this building. Tomorrow, Thursday, at 9:30 in the morning, we have a Department Head-Elected Official Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building, that's June 3rd. Again, June 3rd, tomorrow, 1:00 in the afternoon, we have a Health and Human Services Policy Group Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom, that's the fifth floor of this building. And then tomorrow, June 3rd, at 1:30 in the afternoon, we have a work session regarding the upcoming fire season in San T M Canyon Response and that's in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. And on Friday, June 4th, at 11:00 a.m., we have an Association of Oregon Counties COVID-19 Conference Call, that's a virtual meeting. On Monday, June 7th, at 9:00 in the morning, we have a Management Update located in the Commissioners' Boardroom, that's on the fifth floor of this building. On Monday, June 7th, at 10:00 in the morning, we have a Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer Meeting with an executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.660 to A B D E F H I, which will begin immediately following Management Update and that's again located in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. Then on Monday, June 7th, at 1:00 in the afternoon, we have a Committee, Board of Commissioners' Policy Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. On Monday, June 7th, 3:00 in the afternoon, we have a San T M Canyon Wildfire Relief Fund Board Meeting, which is virtual. And then on Tuesday, June 8th, at 7:30 in the morning, we have a State and Marion County Meeting located at the Cover Bridge Restaurant at 510 North Third Avenue in Staeton. And then on June 8th, that's Tuesday, at 9:30 in the morning, we have a Community Services Check-In Meeting in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. And then on Tuesday, June 8th, at 2:30 in the afternoon, we have a Health and Human Services Policy Group Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. And then on Wednesday, June 9th, at 9:00 a.m., we have board session located in this room, the Center Hearing Room, and that's the fifth floor of this building, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem.
All right, anything you want to chat about? Just warning, the fire alarm may go off, I was warned about that.
I saw that.
So I told them we were going to have a short board session, but.
All right.
If it goes off, we'll end. Anything you want to share?
We did several ribbon cuttings over the weekend in Detroit, that was fantastic. Commissioner Willis had his first Chester's Chicken.
I did, never had it before.
Was that your first boat ride?
No, 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 I'd been on the river before, but I hadn't been on that boat before yet.
The pontoon?
The pontoon boat, it's pretty fast.
Were you the one that broke it?
I did not, no, had nothing to do with that.
That's funny.
I only do positive things, but I did see a picture of them with a blow-up unicorn that they had rescued from the lake.
That's right.
That I was not a part of that rescue, but it looks like an important rescue.
I did see it floating in the lake as we, we raced by it with the kids on inner tubes and I thought, hmm, there's nobody on that.
So it was great to get boats in the water, get, I got back in my house, you know, after the fire flood and back in the house. And I was out on the lake on Saturday and I saw the sheriff, I saw Zahn and Garrett, Garrett pulling a boat, towing a boat in.
Oh, yes.
And it kind of looked familiar to me, but I don't know whose boat it was.
It was totally my boat.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that was exciting.
And then moi, right outside the marina, dead battery, had to get rescued, not by the sheriff though.
You know, there's kinks, the first weekend, you know, you got to work through some things.
Well, I think it was a good experience for me because after they towed me in, the next day I was out with my daughters and there was a stranded ski doer guy towing somebody, he was just out there by the island, he's like waving, my girls were freaking out, I was like, what's happening, you know, because we blast the music and we were headed out to blow out. And so we pulled around and they were like, wait, wait, we won't start. And so of course, I picked up the phone and called Garrett.
You didn't tow him in?
No, because I had my girls and it's just, I don't think, I don't know how to do that safely and I would rather have a professional that knows what they're doing rather than tip somebody over in the water. And the guy says, odd that you have a phone number, and I said, no, he's a good friend. So it worked out and they did a great job. There were several things, a boat sank this weekend, that's unfortunate.
Several that almost did.
Several that almost did. This is my advice to people that own a boat, you should check it before you put it in the water. You should do the full engine check, make sure the plug, everyone was like, oh, is the plug in? So in, in our case even, we put our boat in the water and it started fill, the, whatever that little thing is underneath, which I forget, the hole started filling with water and we turned on the bilge pump and the water kept, went out. And when Nathan opened up the motor, the guy that did our winterization did not plug back in two of the main hoses and it, they were just literally sucking water right up the lake into the boat. And that happened to several people, so.
Pearls of wisdom, Commissioner Bethel.
Yes.
Check your boat before you put it in the water.
Check your boat, all the hoses should be connected, it was an exciting weekend.
Yeah, it was, it's really emotional, I know we did the ribbon cutting in front of Mountain High.
Oh, yes.
I, I was like, oof, you know, from where we were on September 8th to, I say September 8th because it was, you know, Tuesday when we actually left, but September 7th, September 8th. And cutting that ribbon and then Detroit Lake Lodge.
The Driftwood Grill.
The Driftwood Grill. And then the next day we did both marinas, they're both open and.
Connor's Barbecue.
And then Connor's, yeah. So it was a working day, but a, a working weekend, at least Friday and Saturday for us, but it was, it was really, really exciting and the mayor, you know, we were talking about doing, doing a ribbon cutting for every home that gets reoccupied, rebuilt and reoccupied. I think that would be really cool, to just, you know, cut a ribbon if people wanted.
Better get more ribbon.
Well, yeah, I got my Christmas ribbon up there, I could go get it for you.
Yeah, that, it's needed because the ribbon I took is completely annihilated.
Strashed, I noticed, everybody was taping it together.
Yeah, it was, it was raining by the end of the weekend.
What else?
I learned Community Services has scissors, by the way.
Not as good as your scissors?
Kaiser Chamber lent us their scissors and yes, Community Services has large scissors, Tammer said, so.
Yeah.
Maybe Commissioner Cameron just needs to keep him in his house for those activities.
Well, they're not that expensive to get.
They're not.
Right.
And actually Detroit Foundation is purchasing their own, so.
I've never shopped for large scissors before, so I wouldn't know.
It's totally an online purchase.
Right.
They're less than a hundred dollars and they are real, they will cut you.
So I, I moved, I, I moved apartments yesterday and today, this morning, sharing upstairs till midnight last night, until 3:00, on the hottest day of the year and, and Coz, this, this, this studio, oh yeah, hottest day so far this year. And the studio I moved into has no air conditioning.
Oh, geez.
Right, I mean, it's like, that's, in fact, when you sign the papers, they have this air conditioning thing on there, it's one of the 20 pages that you sign. And I just, it was like, I got up this morning and, and you go from the lake where you wake up in the morning with your windows open, all you hear is birds, to.
Cars.
Traffic sirens, it's like, okay, you're city living and here's lake living, right? So you know where I'm going to spend more time. So I got, I got a little bit more to do and, but it's, you know, I, I, I'm blessed and I think yesterday was a really great time where we got to be with the Smith, is it Smith's, right?
That's right.
That got the, the tiny home donated to them back in Gates and I saw a picture, I think they got it up there.
That's right, they took it up at 2:30 and it's on their lot and I suspect they slept in it last night.
So there's, there's little things happening every day that are signs of, of growth and coming back, so it's, it's pretty cool to see all the, the good things happening within, you know, the, the burnt area up there, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
There was great energy in Detroit this weekend, really positive.
The other thing I think was really good that we did last week was this, that airport update, getting the Salem Airport update and the Aurora Airport update and those two assets and how they contribute to economic development, some really good assets for us. And Jan, budget. Thank you, thank you for you and, and the whole budget team and how you made that go really well and, you know, the feedback we got on the budget, and I was glad that our team was able to, you know, share what we really do. And I got a call yesterday from, I took that call while we were at that, that, in the car, the Fred Meyer, President of Kroger wants to meet with us and the city of Salem and they've already, I guess they already met with the governor and the governor suggested that, that they meet with Marion County, so I think this would be really fun, not fun, but they have, they have a interesting problem, shoplifting, nobody does anything about it and I think Commissioner Willis, I really appreciate what you said about until we're all on the same page of how we're going to, what are the rules that we're going to have in our community and how we're going to take care of those rules, if some, if some other jurisdiction wants to do this and we want to do this, we're not going to get, we're not going to get there. So I think that would be a really good thing to discuss in, in this meeting with them.
And I'll be frank, we, I, I would say in general, we've been pretty aligned with the local jurisdictions, it really has been the state.
Yeah.
And, and ODOT has been a fabulous partner on a lot of our projects, the, the North County Safety Corridor, the work up in the canyon, like the stuff that's ODOT-specific, but the folks from the Governor's Office have told them they can't.
Move.
Have the same rules that we have on their.
Accountability.
Land near the highway, near I-5 and so they have a different set of rules there.
So we want ODOT in that con, when we meet, when we meet.
Well, and also the Governor's Office.
Right.
Because they're the ones telling ODOT.
That's right.
Yeah, so it's interesting that the Governor thinks that Kroger should meet with Marion County.
Well, I think, no, they, they want to know about our mental health, I mean, that's the kind of things we're going to talk about.
The $40 million that we're spending a year.
Support, yeah, what are we doing, you know, mental health-wise and stuff and I think that's really important, that we, that we have that meeting. But I was watching a special the other night, I don't remember where it was, but I noticed that Walgreens is pulling all their stores, closing all their stores in San Francisco because they're getting shoplifted.
That's right, because it's such a burden to be in business there.
They're getting shoplifted to death and nobody will stop it. And, you know, that's the type of thing that, that Fred Myers is experiencing and I know Roth's is getting it in West Salem and Polk County's done some things over there to help.
But others, like Rudy's Steakhouse was just, was, was robbed to the tune of $50,000 just a couple of weeks ago, like everybody's experiencing it.
That video that Rudy's put together, though, you heard Paige, that wasn't, it's not all accurate, the, the, some of those people were prosecuted, are being prosecuted.
That's right, that's right, but still, my point is, is that people are being harmed. Their businesses are being harmed and here we know that the city of Salem is working on a sit-ly ordinance and, and eliminating people from the park, which is going to take months, which, great, but what does that do to the businesses and the people that have literally no ability to kind of, to ask for, for help and accountability? And there is a team of Salem businesses asking for help, they're going to be meeting with some of the members of the Marion County service providers to say, what, what can we do? Because they want to partner, they don't believe that the finger pointing is, is doing any good and they want to be impactful, but it is a partnership and I agree with Commissioner Willis, it's 100% everybody has to be on the same page.
Yeah, we have to. So that's, Jan, I didn't have a chance to talk to you about that, but that's a, I know we were going to have a meet with the city of Salem anyways on, on some of this stuff, but that was an interesting phone call that I got yesterday. So, all right, the alarm didn't go off, it's 10 till.
They're probably waiting for us.
All right, thank you, everybody, anything else?
No.
Legal counsel, Dee, you didn't have anything to say today?
You guys did it perfectly today.
Oh, my gosh, would you, Sam, is Sam around? Is Sam around, because he always told me I would never reach perfection.
I think collectively he did today.